So, we're back to the definitions and use table. Everybody received the new draft.
Yes.
Do we want to start at the beginning, just to see if...
Yeah, that's what I would say is go through and make sure there's nothing that was missed. I think the one remaining item that needs to be addressed is the Summer Street overlay.
Whalen?
What?
Whalen?
Well, the corrections that were proposed at the last meeting are in there.
Okay.
So, Summer Street has not had any proposal or changes made.
Okay.
So, it might be worth going through. I mean, we'll hit Whalen before we hit Summer Street anyway. And even if we don't, we can just skip Summer Street and go through all the red corrections and come back and...
Sounds good.
So, the what's in red should only be the changes we made at the last...
The one...
Which...
The one I didn't attend.
Correct.
Okay.
So, anything that was red in the December 11th version has been accepted as an approved change.
Okay.
And is in this as black text.
Good.
So, anything in red was just corrections, alterations, cleanups that was made at the last meeting.
So, we should...
There were a number of items that were held for discussion that were either stricken, which we'll see in red, or just let's keep it and you won't even notice any difference.
Okay. So, proposed proposal, should we start there?
Yeah. So, we'll just take out proposed. So, in the case, a proposal is adjacent to a planned residential area, special care.
Yeah. When... The town's putting this thing together, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, we get it and it still is referred to here as the protective bylaw of the town of Lunenburg, even though everything has changed, right? All the numbering, sorry, has changed.
Okay. I mean, it's technically now the chapter 250 of the Code of...
Of the Code of Lunenburg.
Known as zoning.
Yeah.
And this is all going to get folded into that.
Okay, so Code of Lunenburg is what we want to go with?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate the preferablys finally being decided.
So, I think the one area I want to call out is E at the top of page nine. There was a lot of discussion about how producing articulation in the horizontal and vertical planes wasn't plain enough language and that the average citizen wouldn't understand it. I really, I kind of struggled with this because it's not really text for something that the average citizen's going to be dealing with. And really articulation in the horizontal and vertical planes is the appropriate language. There were some strong feelings that that didn't fit. So, you know, really a variation is the only thing that I could really come up with. And I'm...
Would you be opposed to architectural variation?
No, I wouldn't at all. As I said, I really kind of struggled with it because it really isn't an architectural variation. It's, you're looking for just a change in, in some sort of texture.
Right, a breakup of it.
Yeah, and...
But, I mean, someone could, not to be that way, but somebody could tack a gutter across the house and say, "There." It's a variation.
I agree. And it's not even house, it's commercial buildings.
Yeah.
On a flat roof specifically.
Yeah.
So, it's a very distinct case. It's not, this isn't, everything is going to have to deal with this section.
And there are some typos in there. You see those, right? Flat roofs that are visible from the street level are prohibited unless and the facade.
No, I didn't see that.
Okay.
Or it wouldn't be in there.
So, something needs to change there. Unless the facade includes...
Unless the facade includes design elements, yeah.
Still scratch and...
That produce an architectural variation in the horizontal and vertical planes.
Yeah.
And I guess that'll work as architectural can just mean structure.
Planer surfaces comes to my mind, but I don't know that that's...
Honestly, that's an even higher concept, I think, than articulation, so...
Yeah, yeah.
How about it produce significant variation in the horizontal? Is that too much?
I don't even know if it needs to be significant. It just needs to be something that breaks it up. I think, I think architectural variation should, should cover it and give enough clarity.
Hmm.
Okay. Again, I don't, I don't want to get lost in the weeds of crafting word.
Esoteric.
I just want, I just want it to be clear and, and in a way that people feel that, you know...
Anybody could understand.
Joe citizen will understand it, or Jane citizen.
Grandma test.
You know, and I love the grandma test. I don't know that all the bylaws necessarily are, are ever going to pass the grandma test. I mean, honestly, most of these don't pass the intelligent citizen test because...
If I can understand them, anybody can.
But they're also, they're written in, in a different language and meant for a different purpose. And there are plenty of intelligent people who don't do this kind of stuff that look at them and go, "I have no idea what this means." And you explain to them, they're like, "Oh, that makes sense."
No, it just, yeah, it does...
It's a, it's a different way of looking at it.
It looks like nonsense unless you're used to it or get into a rhythm of reading it, yeah.
It's like a knitting pattern or a recipe or anything like that. If you aren't used to using it, you just look at it and it's Greek.
Yep.
So, did we have a discussion about the sidewalks and then determine it was fine?
Where?
The 5A. On page nine?
Page nine, 5A. Yeah, there was a discussion and everybody felt like that should be retained.
Okay.
It's my recollection.
Yeah, that's how I remember it. I'm sorry, I missed that. Where are you?
I remember talking about it. Page nine, 5A.
Page nine, 5A.
We had also had a significant discussion on page eight about B3. And that ended up being the site shall, shall have sufficient pedestrian access to all public facilities on the site.
Do you remember that? You talked about sidewalks and got that straightened out, because that is weird. Did you read that? Sidewalks?
Sidewalks shall be provided from the street line when applicable.
When applicable?
And from the parking areas to the building.
When, when, when would they be applicable versus not applicable? I mean, you either, you either want a sidewalk or you don't, right?
Well, if you have two curb cuts and an island, where are you going to put a sidewalk?
Two curb cuts and an island?
Just along the road.
Yeah.
You're going to put, you can't put us, I mean, you can put a walkway, not a sidewalk per se, but you have to have pedestrian access.
Ah, okay, okay, I see.
Like the mobile on Mass Ave. Where would you put a sidewalk to the building?
Hmm. Good point.
Whereas with Walmart, you theoretically could run one up one of those sides.
I see. So, if the layout, it's possible, it should be there.
Right, and that's why we put three, that it should have access to all public facilities, so that it's not mandated that it's a sidewalk.
Yep, you could stripe or something, yep.
You know, it could be a gravel path, it could be a hashed area in the parking.
Yep, okay.
Even a set of curb stops that has three feet between it that you could traverse.
Yeah. So, here we did practicable in relation to the limitations imposed by the surrounding natural features as determined by the planning board. So, I like that because it sort of gets away from practicable as it, just a limitation of their wallet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I felt like that was the discussion was about it being practicable with what existed on site.
Right.
And I felt like adding in the determination, the planning board, they could come and say, "We don't think it's practicable to do here." And you could look at it and say, you know, "Come on, it's, you know, it's a six-inch scrape, you can, you can make that happen." Or, you know what, you're right. Let's save those trees. It's not practicable to cut all those, you know, 20-inch trees down and, and do this, this thing.
Yeah, I just want to get away from that. It's, they always fall back to, "Yeah, it's not practical because I can't afford it." You know what I mean? That's nonsense.
So, what kind of limitations can a surrounding natural feature impose? I guess might be a question.
Well, um...
Oh, for instance, if you have too much of a grade, you got like a drop off, you know what I mean? You're not going to get a tree to grow there, for instance, you know what I mean?
Well, this is saying, "Natural features shall be retained."
Retained, yeah.
So, if there's a grade that means you can't put the road somewhere else, or the parking area, or some other facility, then it's not practicable to bring in, you know, 100,000 yards of fill to compact and build.
Okay.
Or, you know, if we, if we want to keep that standard trees, that means that we have to go and blast out this rock, this granite outcropping that's going to, you know, have this other potential detrimental impact. More than just saying, you know, "Well, it's really just cheaper if we drive the bulldozer in there and knock all the trees down to build this."
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's a...
This is all for commercial and that's...
Yes.
Generally what they do.
Well, yes, it is.
Okay, so that gives, that gives a note either way practically.
Mm-hmm.
This is Office Park. Oh, use, okay. Pretty good with 10?
Yeah, I'm, uh, yeah, I'm on page 12 now. But where's everyone else?
I'm on 11. I'm on 11.
So, if we're on 12, I'm going to call out I at the top of the page. That was where we were struggling with footprint or otherwise, and I just called it lot coverage of all buildings, because that will cover whatever, whatever the building covers, it constitutes lot coverage. We don't have to worry about whether they build a tiny foundation and like an upside-down pyramid, or trying to cover roof area or something like that. We'll just call it lot coverage and that's whatever the building covers.
That's something we could also use in reference to solar later on, if we're talking about, you know, density of use or a coverage of, you know what I mean, lot coverage. That also works.
I mean, I guess we'll have to look at that specific to solar.
Yeah. I'm just trying to keep the language the same, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. If we're looking to limit how much of a lot solar covers, I think that that's something we could talk about.
You could say, you could go that way, yeah.
It's not going to add up all the posts of the, uh, footings.
And I think what's, what we're going to find with solar specifically, and this is sort of a stormwater issue with solar too, is it's disconnected impervious.
Disconnected impervious.
So...
Are you describing it?
What's that?
You're describing it.
Yes, that, that's what they, so...
It's considered disconnected impervious.
Well, because if you build a building, it's this, and the rain falls on it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when you do solar, if you had the same footprint of solar panels as this building, it's all cut up into smaller pieces and they're all put at this funny little angle. So, you're not covering the lot in this way. You have a bunch of small, little coverages that allow for penetration of rain and sun and other things through the different cracks.
Mm-hmm.
So, at least for stormwater, it models differently. I don't know if that's part of the concern with lot coverage. I know for like industrial area building and pavement, that would be part of it. Whereas with solar, it's all clean runoff, similar to a roof. There's not...
Yeah, so, okay, I see what you're saying. So, it's not the same language necessarily, because it's not the same meeting.
Yeah, I think you're probably wanting to, I understand what you're doing.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look...
You're looking at how it impacts the lot visually and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In different districts. And I think that's slightly different than what this is getting at.
Yes, because this is concerned with runoff and this is concerned with impervious.
I think it's the, yeah, impervious and the way that the lot is being used and the intensity of the use. And I don't know that that's necessarily the same conversation with, with solar panels.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Is that A2? A1.
A1.
On A2, I think we should get rid of any lot devoted to and just say the total area of impervious air, well, impervious shall not exceed, total impervious area.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, just as devoted to shall not exceed.
Yeah.
You don't really devote, you pave it.
Total area.
Well, it's devoted.
So, you're saying the total area...
Total impervious area shall not exceed, so it becomes one short sentence.
Yes, concise.
Total impaired, whoops, impervious area shall not exceed. Yep, that works nicely.
I didn't really touch anything in there. I think honestly, the next thing we get to with changes is Whalen.
Whalen? Yeah.
So, here, it's changes under four conditions of use.
Okay, I got some questions here.
Did you get a chance to review the last meeting at all?
No, I didn't. So, the non-acreage.
Correct.
Why the non-acreage?
I think the intent, or the...
Listen.
I think the intent was that there has been a division on how the board has looked at townhouse development in Whalen.
Okay.
And whether the 40,000 is a density or just a minimum lot size. So, what this is doing is saying that you can put townhouses on any parcel in that Whalen district, but you can't vary the height setbacks, et cetera, unless you have more than 10 acres. And then, I think where the clarification comes is under C, where it says the maximum density shall be determined by the planning board, which is the question of who determines the density, what is the density? So, that clarifies that.
Okay.
Then capping it at eight.
And everyone was okay with that, given the fact that there are, this is not the only...
Correct.
The only available lot under...
There's about a half dozen lots over up on that side street.
And everyone's okay with those becoming, potentially becoming townhouses?
As long as we have the ability to choose the density.
In the Whalen overlay? Yeah, there's 11 total lots.
They're all, you know, single, single-family dwellings.
Three of which are encompassed in Emerald Place. One of which is Embers, one of which is this parcel, or the three and a half acre parcel. And then there's, I think the, is it On the Rocks? Is that the other?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
The bar over there?
Yeah.
And then there's, I think, six.
So, we're saying they don't need to have the 40,000 square feet, or they still need to have the 40,000 square feet to qualify as a building lot?
Because this says you can do that. You can stick it on a, you know, small lot, right?
Oh, those are already non-con, I mean, those are like cottages.
Yeah.
I think they're year-round houses.
Well, they've, they've turned into that, yes.
The lots are small.
Correct.
You want to put a townhouse? You're going to stack them up around top of each other. I don't know if...
Well, I think also the reality of developing that is fairly limited. And again, this was a proposal from a board member that, that everybody sort of felt was...
Yeah, I mean, my, again, I think my only concern is that there should be some minimum lot size. Well, 40,000 is an acre and I don't think, aside from, I don't think Embers is even...
It is, and Embers is like a quarter acre, yeah.
Then, then On the Rocks is the other one, right? The frontage? That's not going to have an acre, is it?
So, what I'm saying is, I'm not sure we really want to allow, I mean, it might be in the district, but I'm not, do we really want to allow of, you know, uh... Do we know what a garden apartment looks, you know what I mean, could be? Because what are those things on the front side of, of, of Emerald Acres called? Those are in there, and are they calling those townhouses with, you know, 120, 10 units in them, or whatever they have in them?
What, the garden apartments?
Yeah. Because this allows garden apartments.
Block?
This allows large garden apartments.
I also think, though, the non-acreage dimensional, so that means you can't modify the acreage dimension, which means you would need 40,000.
Okay. So, if it didn't have, if it didn't have 40,000 square feet, that's...
Right, right. That's what you would need, okay. Sorry, yep, yep, of course.
It, it took me a minute to kind of parse out what you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
How that would apply. No, that's okay.
So, that the acreage dimensional stays, okay. Okay, see, I was misunderstanding that completely.
Indeed, if the density exceeds the underlying zone, there shall be not more than two bedrooms per unit.
Yeah, is that, are we still...
The underlying is one per acre?
Correct.
So, anything over that's got to have no more than two bedrooms.
So, if they wanted to say they could, I guess there aren't that many left, but if they had a...
I mean, I guess if they, if they can sell them as, you know, 55 and over, right? And that's, people are looking for them, so, all right.
So, that's also going to open up this other commercial piece.
Across the street?
No, that's part of Emerald Place.
Yeah.
That, that's part of their existing approval?
Yeah.
The one that's over by where they're putting the new houses?
Yep.
Was it earmarked for commercial development?
They do have some commercial development.
Is it required?
Is it required? No, but I think it was set aside in their approval.
They can change it, they're, they can apply it.
Coming here.
Right.
So, I mean, in theory, the board would deal with that. I, honestly, I would think that they would be happier to build commercial over there.
Yeah.
I mean, they have a built-in audience.
Yeah.
And they're already stuck as landlords across the street.
Yeah.
I don't see what it's a deterrent to put more of the same over there, but...
I mean, I, think of how easily you could fill that space and you say, "Listen, I've got 240 units."
Right across the street.
A stone's throw away for your dry cleaner, or your pizza place, or your coffee shop, or whatever.
Yep.
That's true. And 12,000 car trips a day that go by there.
I was going to say, I mean, where's the closest Starbucks?
Lemonster.
Yeah, well, I mean, at the mall, or at the Target.
Well, they could have made a strip mall here, too.
I only go to Apollo's. No one's going to get that.
I, I get that.
All right, Trityown? Are we on to Trityown?
Yeah, I don't think we should touch, we've talked about not touching Trityown at all.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Hence, I didn't even reformat it.
Yeah. Whoop, what's that?
Pages of Summer Streets.
Uh, it's on page 44. I got to tell you, everyone was thrilled when I told them we were bringing 75 pages of zoning to the town meeting.
We're not slackers, we're doing the work.
Handouts.
Realize that we'll be the last people on the agenda, so we might not get this...
Yeah, right.
So, what page are we jumping to?
44.
Oh, nice, my next page. And we didn't get to that previously.
Yeah. Correct. I mean, I don't think the objectives are bad or wrong, I guess. Really, where I get into some question is under the permitted uses, which is on page 46. The dimensional standards, you know, they could certainly be reviewed. I don't think that they're bad. I think it gives the ability to redevelop some of that area in different ways. Really, what this does, other than... I, I guess it's really uses where I would come down on this, this bylaws, because it says you can use anything in the underlying zoning, or you can have a mixed-use development. And so, great, but maybe have a consistent, throughout the Summer Street, you can do these types of projects, or you can use the underlying. Because half of it's industrial, half of it is commercial.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you're in the commercial section, you have one set of uses. If you're in the industrial, you have one set of uses. Whether you use the overlay or not, you're stuck with that same set of uses that you have in the, so you're not going to get consistent uses and design quality, because people aren't going to choose to use the overlay. Well, they may choose to use the overlay, but they're still going to be stuck with the same uses. And the industrial uses that we have don't necessarily match up with the commercial uses and vice versa.
Okay.
So, you have one side of the street that's going to end up industrial, one side that's going to end up commercial, and...
How do you marry the two?
Yeah. I don't, I don't understand how that, that, I don't think that it works for the overlay district. I think if you give people the ability to build using the overlay district, there should be a consistent set of uses. Anywhere in the overlay district, you can do this. And entice people to be able to do that. Because there are a number of properties on the industrial side down near the Lemonster line that were retail or are retail and have been for a while, and aren't really big enough for any reasonable industrial use.
Mm-hmm.
But can't take advantage of the overlay, because they can't put a commercial use in there, because it's...
Right.
So, they're just stringing along as their pre-existing non-conforming use. Whereas if you set up a more commercial-based overlay district, you might find the ability to redevelop those, or someone may choose to redevelop those parcels.
Well, wasn't the hook originally, though, they wanted something that was multi-use? They wanted, they wanted living and business in the same...
Correct.
The same utility.
Yes, and I'm, I'm all for keeping the mixed use and having the multi-use on there. I guess what I'm saying is, as for the non-residential use, I think there should be just a set of, these are the uses that are allowed in this district.
Okay.
As opposed to...
In the industrial areas?
In, in the Summer Street overlay.
In the overlay as a whole, okay.
As a whole.
As opposed to...
As opposed to, this says you can use the underlying zoning, or you can only, the uses, any use permitted by right or special permit in the underlying zone. So, you have an overlay that says you have to do all these things, but you can only have the uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning. And you can have mixed use. So, to me, that doesn't...
So, in the industrial, you don't have a mixed use of industrial and residential?
Correct, of Office Park and then some, as opposed to saying, "Okay, we're going to allow retail, professional service, blah, blah, whatever, you know, the board feels is appropriate." From the use definitions that we've just put together, and nailing those down as these are allowable in the Summer Street overlay, and you can do mixed use. And these are the uses that are allowed. These ones by right, these ones by special permit.
Okay, but, but, but the trade-off is we're going to lose some industrial? Is that what you're saying? Potential?
Yes, I mean, really, though? Yes, I mean, really, though, the industrial land over there.
MBTA.
The, the only chunk that's really substantial is MBTA.
Okay.
There is Miller's paving.
Yep.
There's the Miller's house, um, there's, uh.
The trailer.
Mr. Panarelli's, not Panarelli, is it, Pamarini's garage.
And the trailer repair.
The trailer repair, um.
And those are considered industrial?
They're in the industrial zone.
They're in the industrial zone, okay.
So, but none of the lots in the industrial zone exceed an acre. And.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, I mean, we're not talking about vast tracts of land.
Yeah.
We're talking about really kinda dinky parcels that may make a viable commercial or mixed-use development, but I don't see being a viable industrial development going forward. And we're going to put in this beautiful new
Oh, it's gonna be.
Street with greenery and, you know, pedestrian access and potentially bike act, and, you know, is that really an industrial facility at that point, or are we talking about more of a lifestyle, you know, active, human-scale development that would be enhanced by commercial and mixed-use development?
Well, I would lean that way, but, you know, what about what's going on in Lemonster and Fitchburg, because they all sort of, everybody sort of comes together, right, in that sort of, that corner.
Yeah, I mean, Lemonster is all residential.
Yeah.
Down to the corner of North Street and Thirteen, uh, and then there's some commercial over there. So you're potentially creating an area where you would serve residents of Lemonster with your business. And as you follow Summer Street into Fitchburg, it's all commercial. You know, you've got those couple of small strip malls, you've got some, uh, trade offices, you've got that other strip, uh, strip plaza.
So this would be kind of a good transitional area for.
I mean, it would fit in with, with what Fitchburg has, and it would have, you know, the potential for serving residents that live adjacent to it in Lemonster, so I don't think we're necessarily rocking the boat, I think we're probably kind of fitting more in with the tone of the area than saying, oh, well, let's just squeeze some other industrial in there.
Okay.
I have a feeling.
Wouldn't limit it to no industrial, correct? I mean, they.
No, cause the underlying zone still exists.
If they can find something industrial that would fit in there appropriately, then they would still be able to do it.
Correct, under, under the underlying zoning.
I think that's the purpose of the overlay.
And, yes, exactly, to give you options, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect MBTA, cause they would still be zoned industrial, and honestly, MBTA doesn't really care, they just kinda, you know, they do their own thing, yeah.
So there are two parcels adjacent to the MBTA and behind Miller's and Pamarini? That are over two acres each, one of them's four something, the other one's two something, those are privately held, they don't say MBTA. They're in the industrial.
Uh, yeah, I'm looking at the rock. And then, no, that's, uh, that's Lemonster Sher, that's Lemonster Shirley Road, we're looking at Summer Street. Uh, you're correct, there are, cause the gas line for one of those goes through Mr. Pamarini and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Property. And, and again, I mean, they're still industrially zoned, I believe they're currently used, and I believe they're accessed through Fitchburg. If I'm not mistaken.
Probably have to, or Lemonster, possibly.
There's a shared road between them, doesn't it?
Maybe there is.
I mean, there's a road there.
But again, I, you know, I don't think that we're taking anything away from them by changing the overlay district.
Okay, so let's go back to what you're, what you're saying you'd like to see. You would like to see us change the overlay to specifically?
To specific uses.
Call out specific uses in the overlay.
These are the type of things we think would fit into the Summer Street area.
Yeah.
And should be allowed as part of the overlay in exchange for meeting these criteria that are already outlined in the overlay. Uh, and are, you know, changed if you think they need to be changed, but I think that there was some pretty significant discussion about, you know, what the overlay criteria was and, and how, you know, the parcels get developed. It's really the uses that I think could be changed to better serve the town.
Okay.
I would like to see us treat the housing in that area similar to the way we did in the VCD. Not to, to kind of discourage it, but, you know, acknowledge that there is some existing and provide for, excuse me, expanded uses that include non-residential, in-residential.
Well, I think that by calling out the new potential uses and that you would do that. Because the residential areas down, uh, by Graham Street in the residential zone aren't in the Summer Street overlay.
Right, but a, a lot, a lot of those.
A lot of the commercial properties have residents on them.
Right.
So, again, I think by calling out.
Studio there's on.
Yeah, I think calling out specific uses gives someone the ability to go in and occupy one of those.
So we already, we already sort of have that in permitted uses, but are you saying you would like to just get even more specific than that?
Yes, under A.
Okay.
I'd like to strike A.
Okay.
And say, and go to the use table.
Okay.
And pull out, you know, how we have the definitions that follow the use table that correspond to that. Go through the use table and say, these things we think should be by right in the overlay district, if they meet these standards. These things should be by special permit if they meet these standards, and mixed use would be, I think it's called out as special permit. Uh, and would be done by special permit, and then we would go back to this.
Now, mixed use is just permitted apparently by right, by right.
Use which don't track by law.
Following uses are permitted within the summer, the revitalization overlay district, mixed-use development, so it's already by, by right.
Yep, um, and I think we would go into the Permit Granting Authority and change that to one singular Permit Granting Authority, cause right now the ZBA has review authority over commercial and Planning Board has review authority over industrial, I think there should be one permitting authority. And I don't know, I, I'm, I actually, I think it should probably be the zoning board. Uh, because I think there, I think when this board is the permitting authority, it can muddy the waters with the site plan approval portion of it. And I think if the zoning board is the permitting authority for use, they tend to look specifically at the use and its impact on the surrounding area, and they worry less about the physical.
Okay, but we're always talking about streamlining the process. Uh, they don't do development plan.
Correct.
Review.
Correct.
And this has to do with industrial development plan review. Uh, the Planning Board is hereby the Permit Granting Authority pertaining to the industrial district where applicable projects proposed within the overlay district shall be reviewed under Section eight four Development Plan Review.
Correct, but what I'm saying is, there's, if you have uses that you think need to be special permitted. Cause what's happening is, is we have a bifurcated district as far as uses go, currently. So there's an industrial portion and a commercial portion, and the ZBA is the special permit granting authority for uses under the commercial district.
Correct.
Within Summer Street overlay.
Right.
The Planning Board is the industrial portion of special permitting within.
For reviews.
Summer Street, no, for the special permit granting authority.
Yes.
And then, and then they also are doing development plan review.
Yes.
Or site plan approval now.
So you like to make them.
What I'm saying is, if you determine uses need special permit. Let the zoning board be the special permit granting authority for the use. And they're still going to need to come here for site plan approval. And the site plan approval discussion then is focused wholly on a use that's already approved, and you're looking at the time, place, and manner as you do with most of site plan approvals, and you don't get mired in the, oh, well, is this use really okay here?
Yeah.
You're letting someone take that equation away from you, and you're focusing more on the physical development of it.
I'm fine with that.
So you're saying establish a set of by-right uses in the use table, and then establishing some that would need an S.
Correct.
Special permit granting.
And on special permits, we would only be the, the.
The site plan approval.
Site plan approval.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that makes sense, can you write that up?
Of course I can.
So that it makes sense?
Yeah, well.
Out of that?
And I guess what I would look for is you guys to nail that, I mean, I can make suggestions on what uses I think makes sense.
Uh, did you bring a?
I don't, I don't have it with me, I.
Use table.
I can go through it and.
You know, for our next meeting, I think that we can probably nail that down.
Okay.
Well, things like car lots and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have some definitive ideas of what I think, I mean, all the personal service stuff makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, retail obviously makes sense, I think car lot could be still be by special permit, um.
Yeah.
Kind of, you know, entertainment stuff, maybe by special permit.
Contracted yard or something like that.
Yeah, maybe.
That might have a.
Trade showroom or something like that. Yeah.
So small restaurants, are those included?
Yeah, I think we could probably, I mean, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, definitely, okay, all right.
Uh, and, you know, and then the only other change in here, I didn't touch the solar, cause we've talked about how that needs to kind of be its own animal.
Might need to step in to back up.
Yep.
Summer Street revitalization overlay, the purpose, the objectives, I think those should be updated.
Okay.
I, it's just my thought, because I've been, I've been wanting to focus on this because of the rebuild coming up. And then we might want to emphasize that it's been updated according with the upcoming rebuild.
Yeah, I checked that out, I actually liked the verbiage that's in here, uh, I didn't, the purpose, I mean.
Yeah.
I think the, the improvements are gonna make it live up to the purpose more.
Okay.
Like, make it, you know, with the sidewalks and everything, it's gonna make a, a more appealing place to live, work.
I mean, I don't know where we, but, but I, I do, I think, I mean.
Establish a vision.
The changes that we're making across the various different overlays, to, in my mind at least, I, maybe that's what you, where you're going, I don't know, man, but I think they should be connected, you know what I mean, they should be similar in nature, and, and they are moving towards a more modern approach to living, you know what I mean, where people are more centralized, you know, their work and their living and their, uh, exercise and their health and wellness, you know, everything should be sort of connected and easy to get to, and I think that's where we, we seem to be going with this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, where do we spell that out, so this, you know what I mean, I don't know.
I, I don't know that you necessar, I think that's a master plan thing.
Yeah, okay.
So when we start to do the master plan update, I think that's, that will probably foster more zoning changes. And honestly, I think what a lot of this work is leaning towards is commercial nodes. And, you know, neighborhood, commercial areas. At least conceptually based on what this board has talked about, uh, I think that in a community like Lunenburg, that may be a hard sell in some ways, uh, because it's a rural community mentally. Physically in some ways, but, you know, really, we're a first ring suburb, we're a bedroom community in a lot of ways. And we do retain a lot of our rural and agricultural character. Uh, but there's really two sides to this, the, the town of Lunenburg in the way that, that things have developed over the past decade or more.
Well, it's not only that, I think it's, yes, I agree, that there's also the, the increased pressure on people because of the sort of, I don't wanna say the collapse, but the the, the degradation that has happened in the cities that, that we're next to.
Yep.
People have moved in who have a sort of, you know, a new, I guess a new Yankee attitude, you know, they work, they're, they're self-employed. They're not looking for the old way of doing business where you work for a company for fifty years, they're, they're sort of out there and they're doing their own thing.
Yep, and, and I think that, you know, when you start saying, oh, we're gonna create a commercial node here and a commercial node there, it, it's, it's a different physical landscape, but it's also just something that this town is not probably, eh, not used to in the past several decades. Now, maybe historically, there have been a pattern development that sort of worked that way, you know, the Smith shop built up over here, and there was the guy that, you know, did this over here and the cobbler, and they, you know, had this own little thing over here, and the people around there would all go there, and.
Right.
Um, but we've really gotten away from that over, you know, decades and, and centuries, and I, I think a lot of communities are, are starting to reassess how that works and how commercial fits more neatly into some residential areas. Uh, but I also think that it's, it's a, a sensitive discussion about, you know, how things can be put into effect that will not change the overall character of the neighborhood and how, uh, how it works moving forward. So I think it's gonna be incremental, and I think it's gonna take time to, to sort of foster some of that, but I think as successes in areas like the Village.
Yeah, the overlay has definitely helped.
Even Weyland is starting to move in that direction in some ways, uh, and I think that, you know, in the next ten years, you might see a, a fairly drastic shift in that corner of the town on how those commercial properties are developed and what sort of developments go in there.
Yeah, well, we, you know.
I don't wanna end up what we did with Weyland, the intent and purpose was great, but we ended up with all high-density residential.
Well, yeah, I think that was a mistake, I think that was, that was just not, um, it was sort of, I think that was reactionary to what, what was necess, what was needed by the town at the time in terms of meeting its obligations and other things, but, I mean, with some forethought, I think, and some planning, which we're supposed to be doing, right? I, I do think that that kind of, uh, adjusting to, again, you know, people aren't using the, the traditional job centers the way that they have in the past, they're sort of on their own and uh, doing, doing their own thing, and I think if you took like the, the, the area down there in Weyland, uh, where all the, the smaller houses are, you know, like over by the new, the new development. And you allowed mixed use in those, or you allowed people to start there, if they're an accountant. You can buy one of those building, you know, one of those homes relatively inexpensively, keep your business and your home all in one, you know what I mean?
Well, you can do that, under the, under the home occupation.
Yes, but I'm saying if you took that area and started with an area that.
And sort of encouraged it.
Yeah, and encouraged it, yeah, then you could, you've already, now that you've got all that housing there, people do need services, you know, so now you're kind of like, where are you gonna put all that?
Redrawing the overlay at some point is a good idea, and then encouraging more than just high-dens, high-density residential.
That's what I'd like, yeah.
I just don't wanna end up with this same thing over and over again.
That's right, get, get it to something that's.
Well, honestly, I think if you look to change that overlay.
Yeah.
I think high-density residential by itself isn't a, isn't a good sell. I think a, a mixed-use high-density residential makes infinitely more sense.
Absolutely, but I mean, I think you need to.
First floor commercial, second floor.
Yeah.
Third floor residential of some manner is.
I think you need to suck in basically that whole, if it were just from my opinion, need to suck in that whole, uh, that crossroads right there. You know what I mean, and bring in the existing.
Yep.
Old commercial into that.
I would agree.
Anyway, that's a discussion for later, I guess.
Yes, it is.
All right.
So really, you just won a proposal for Summer Street.
Did we?
Did that, did that cover what you were talking about?
Pretty much. Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would, I would like to see that as more like the Village Center and with, with a little bit more beef on commercial industrial, that's all.
Yeah.
It is a major throughfare, and it isn't gonna be just Fitchburg, Lemonster, I mean, we travel through Lemonster from Lunenburg, uh, on North Street, and then Weyland Road goes right there, so, and there's gonna be.
Oh, I, I think it can be a destination, I think it can be an area that, that has, you know, a thriving walkable life, I thi, I think opposite the Village, I, I think it'll be, well, I think it'll be different than the Village, but the same in the idea of having some livelihood and, and multifaceted.
Yeah.
Groups of people and, and transportation through there.
Yeah.
And there is a large, I don't know if it's a senior development or not, but there's a large development off of North Street.
There, yes, there is.
Yeah, and, and it's much the same down in Fitchburg.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that is, but yeah, that's a lot of opportunity there.
And then also, let's not forget, it includes our forty-plus acre parcel, I believe, uh, of the old landfill.
Yes.
That's a subject for another day, right? A hundred and fifty thousand years from now?
I don't know when they close the landfill, so I don't know what the post-closure plan would look like, uh, and I know the town currently uses it for certain.
It's on, it's on Mass GIS as a capped landfill.
Well, yeah, but, you know, usually after twenty years, it changes the way you do a beneficial use determination. So, once it's been closed for twenty years, you get into a different, a different way of looking at a capped landfill.
But it was a small portion of that forty acre lot.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't know much about them. I don't know much about them. Is there any? Any, does anyone know of any uses for them that have resulted in it? Huh?
Solar panels.
Methane, cheap.
Yeah, nothing residentially.
Or we're gonna turn the Lemmonster one into a baseball field.
Yeah, that's what I was after. Anything that you could use it communally?
You can do recreation on some.
Can you?
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean.
On 495, there's the one in Lawrence that's got a baseball field.
Large baseball field, soccer field stuff, we could do that down there? All right, cool.
And you have to, you have to, again, do a beneficial use determination.
Yeah.
They, they make you, you know, double up the cap or, or something like that and, you know, so you have eight inches of clay and then you put all the loam and all that stuff on top of it and.
Yeah.
You know, as long as you're not on it for X period of time and it's not like you're living there and drawing your well water from it.
So, mm, yummy.
Tasty. Um, the only other real change is on page 61 and 62. And I don't think this is the exact language that Michael had proposed, uh, but I think it's the same intent. Uh, and I'm happy to change the language, uh, back to, to what he had.
Yeah, is that what we agreed on, 500?
I thought it was. That's what I had in my notes. Maybe I'm.
I don't think I was here for that discussion.
Yeah, originally, I think it was.
Originally, he wanted 2,500.
Yeah, I thought we got him down to 1,500, but.
I thought he said 1,250.
Oh, okay.
And then he, you know, kind of realized that was a quarter mile and maybe I'm.
Well, I would just like to double check.
And again, that's fine. You know, I, I misplaced the, the paper that he had brought in and I was going from the notes I had in my.
And I did take some notes on that, but I didn't bring.
Written copy.
I didn't bring my correct folder, so.
But it was by special per, he wanted it all cultivation within.
Within a building.
Residential within a building and by special permit.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that covers it and honestly, the, if I'm off on the, the separation, that's easy enough to change. If the board's, you know, collectively amendable to that.
The wording looks good.
Shouldn't 4A be, uh, retail processing and/or cultivation? Or is that just?
That's the way it's written currently.
Okay.
So I, again, I didn't make any changes because no one proposed any changes.
But is that gonna limit somebody that wants to do just retail because it says and?
Well, this is only for RMDs. So yes, it potentially would. Um, I think.
Suggest an edit because, I mean, we gotta bring this forward anyway.
I think at the time.
Where are you? In 4, location, on page 61?
Yeah.
A?
Yes. He's saying, should it say and/or cultivation?
Just to be inclusive of people that don't do all three.
Mm-hmm.
Because as we found, if it, if it's not written that way, it's not.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's fine. Um, I think at the time that this was written, the rules were requiring that all RMDs did cultivation and processing onsite.
Okay.
Because originally, when the laws were passed, DPH was of the thought that you wouldn't be growing offsite. You would, all growing would happen at the location of the RMD.
Oh, no, they had grow.
A self-contained facility.
Huh.
When it was medical, they had grow.
Well, this is, this is the medical bylaw.
Oh, right, but I mean, they did have grow separate from dispensary, I thought.
I think that came shortly after they started to implement it and people came to them and said, listen, this is.
After we wrote our bylaw?
After you wrote your bylaw and after DPH originally initiated their.
Recreation?
No, their, the, the actual licensing process.
Okay.
Because when the, when deep, when it was first passed, when the medical marijuana was first passed, uh, I was working in a different community and we had uh, at least three people come and talk to us about wanting to, what would it take? What are you looking for? We're interested in this. We're chasing a license. Do you think we can get a letter of non-opposition? And all of them were proposing growing and processing and, and retailing all at the same place because their take on the DPH regulations at the time were that that was what was required. I, I don't know if in practice, once they got through that first round of applications, DPH says, well, this is kind of crazy. Let's dial it back and do something different.
So I mean, if, if that's the case, that you didn't, frankly, you really don't even say that, you just have to say RMDs are allowed in.
Right.
Right?
Or, well, I was gonna ask that, are we gonna add marijuana as its own specific use on the use table?
I think so.
All right.
I think that would be my general proposal. That's how I'm seeing most other communities do it. They're defining the uses and then they're zoning them into, into different places.
Yeah, I got into some of the state regs and they are gonna allow like consumption onsite places, but, uh, they have to buy the product from a registered dispensary and then they can only sell single servings like it would like, like alcohol.
Yep. But you can stay in the seat all night.
Well, no, but they, yeah, I mean.
Good luck getting them out of the seat.
By way to.
Do you have a contact high region in this? I'm too cheap to buy.
So now that they can do them separately, do we want to look at different allowances for the different uses? Like, people are worried about retail bringing people into the neighborhoods, but if they're only growing and processing it?
Well, that's why we bring it in as its own use and then we can.
Well, again, this is RMDs.
Yeah.
Okay.
This isn't, this isn't adult-use, non-medical marijuana. This is just the medical portion.
Do you have any indication that they will or could separate the three process, the three different distinct?
For, for RMDs, yes, they can.
Okay, so then we should leave it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you want them to do it all at one, I think adding and/or is fine.
Yeah, I would add and/or then, yeah, it makes sense what Matt said.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Uh, honestly, with the recreational or the non, the adult-use, non-medical, uh, as, is probably the more appropriate title.
Non-medical, yeah.
Um, that's gonna be just open season. That's gonna be all over the place.
Jeepers.
Delivery.
So you think it'll be coming like more like a restrictive process, like not allowed here, but allowed there?
I, I think, I think the town.
Not allowed in the grocery store, but.
I think the town would be best served to be very specific about the areas that they think it's appropriate.
Okay.
Uh, and I think, well, I, I think what, what I feel like I'm reading from the guidance document that I sent you folks and the, uh, tome that Greg has there, they've gotten so specific about the marijuana-related businesses and all of the different types.
Yeah.
That, you know, there's a lot of different bits and pieces that are going to come under the control of the Cannabis Control Commission and will probably require some manner of thought as to where they should be zoned.
Okay.
But that's a discussion for, after we get this done.
Okay.
So actually, B and C imply that they don't all have to be in.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
I think we need to strike agricultural from B.
We are.
Okay, but the, the word, it's the fourth, cultivation and/or processing without agricultural, right? Cause it's not, it's not, it's not exempted by 40A, which is the agricultural exemption.
But you think it still should be and/or.
Cultivation and/or processing? Uh, you know what? I don't think we should.
Why?
Uh, I think the agricultural processing in that instance.
Was like clipping it from the plant?
Correct, is the, the trimming and preparation of the physical plant for sale.
Right.
Not the running the plant through a process to extract oils or other types of extract, which would then be used for creation of other products. Um.
I see. So they get two different kinds of processing?
Correct, because I went on a tour of a facility in Pittsburgh.
Okay.
And they were putting in a machine in which they use, uh, volatile gases to extract a very high potency.
THC out of it, yeah.
That they then turn into like a wax of some manner.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how, what you do with it. I don't know if you.
Can you arrange a tour for us at some point? I know I had asked this in the past, but.
Uh, I can certainly ask the guy. I.
I'd just be interested to see.
He, he just wants the swag bag.
No, honestly, I, I, I mean, we're gonna be writing regulation on this. I'd like to know what I'm talking about.
Um.
I'm a very hands-on and visual person.
So, I, I think that the, you know, the agricultural processing is just the physical preparation of the plant as opposed to doing something with it, making food, making these oils or extracts, that kind of stuff.
So let me call, could, could we call it hand processing? Because agricultural just gives that implication that, um, that we've gotten rid of.
Yeah, okay, is there, do you, are you aware of any?
Cultivation. I mean, does that include, so if you're cultivating corn, are you just growing it or are you growing it?
And cutting it.
And taking it off the stalk?
Cause that could be.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? It's.
We need some work on those definitions.
Well, but I also think that, I don't think it's the, the matter of taking it off the plant. I think it's what happens after you take it off the plant, because my understanding is you don't just take it off the plant, dry it out and stick it in a bag. There's, you know, if you've ever seen one of these things, it's like this mutant. It's like this little fuzzy, got leaves everywhere. And my understanding is they trim all the leaves and stuff off of it. And that would, I don't know that that necessarily is the same.
To promote bud growth?
No, no, once it's taken off.
Oh, once it's taken off?
So, you know, they don't just chop it off the plant and stick it in a bag. They take it off the plant and I don't know if they do it by machine or by hand, but it's.
Okay, but so, so it looks like you've got at least two different kinds of processing, so we need to differentiate between the two. How would you suggest, do we have any words that are available out there that we could use to differentiate, or should we do some research on that?
I guess we could do some research. And I guess in commercial and industrial, processing theoretically could be processing because it doesn't matter which one they're doing in those districts. It's how you define it in the residential district that I think is important. Only because whether you're doing the hand processing or agricultural processing in the commercial industrial district or the more substantial processing doesn't, uh, to me, I don't, I think fits into either of those districts just fine, but isn't something you necessarily want being done in a residential district.
I see. So you want to, okay, so we just leave it processing in the commercial? And for cultivation and something allowed in all residential? Okay, so we'll figure that one out.
So how about harvest? Cultivation is growing it, harvesting is collecting it. But we can come back to it, that's fine.
Yeah.
Harvesting, harvesting. Harvest processing.
Harvest processing?
What, just harvesting?
Uh, that's, yeah.
Matt, you gotta look up, uh, see if harvesting would be, you know, accurate and adequate for that purpose. Can you look up harvesting of marijuana? See if it's.
Harvesting of marijuana specific?
Yeah, to see if that's maybe.
Of marijuana.
Maybe that specifically.
Is it not available?
Is different from the processing that we're talking about in, in commercial, you know what I mean? I mean, that's the right word, harvesting, you know? You brought it up.
I did bring it up. Um, I could consult with agriculture, ag com.
Yeah. All right, yeah, let's, so we'll work on that and try and figure out that right word. And we'll check on Michael's distances here.
This is, this is a yes town, so there's not gonna be any shortage of people who, who know.
This is a what?
A yes town.
What does that mean?
Majority of the residents voted in favor of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Barely.
Yeah, but we still.
I thought it was like.
Like 50, at least 51.
52, 48.
52, 48.
Huh.
That's still half.
As we, since we're talking about that, I think everyone should start thinking about whether you want to limit the number of establishments for adult-use recre, or adult-use, non-medical marijuana in town.
Can we do it per district?
No.
Could the Board of Selectmen have a licensing?
No.
Okay.
Cannabis Control Commission holds all licensing power.
Hmm, this is for consumption?
This is for anything to do with adult-use, non-medical marijuana.
Jeepers, crow, all right.
So what they do.
This is gonna be unreal.
Honestly, the first round, we're going to not have any problem with.
Okay.
Because the first round will be open to only people holding provisional or full licenses under the RMD.
Okay.
And so I guess that doesn't mean that somebody who has one of those couldn't get one and come to Lunenburg. Uh, but I don't know that they necessarily want to stretch their supply lines or any of that stuff. They'll probably stick close to home. Uh, it's when the new year hits and, you know, any Cheech and Chong can get their license application in.
How? You know, I'm a novice to this, I shouldn't say that. Yeah, I don't want to say that, you know, I, I'm a novice to this as a, as a legitimate business, right, opportunity that makes. My question is, if I may, just if the chair will allow me to just ask a couple silly questions. What, with all the smoking laws, right, they won't let you smoke a cigarette in a restaurant, they won't let you smoke a cigarette in a bar. But they'll, apparently they're gonna let you go to just a smoke joint, is that right? Where you, like a joint, joint?
Cigar bar. They also have incinerators where there, it's like smokeless, it just extracts it without the fire.
Yeah?
Apparently Greg is well-versed.
Jeepers.
I, I, I think also.
Talking about.
Yeah.
I also think that there's.
But they can't get the carbon emissions down?
I also think that there's probably a portion of it that will be onsite consumption through some form of edible or drinkable product.
Okay.
Um.
Go to the place at the end of the road and walk in and start asking questions.
Jeepers, man.
What place at the end of the road?
The smoke shop at the end of Pleasant Street.
I thought I was a creative teenager. Just handed the big business.
Actually did open another business next door to that and I believe on Summer Street, they either reopened or opened a auto school as well.
Marijuana auto school?
No, Townsend Auto opened an auto school on Summer Street.
Should I come back this afternoon? Try tomorrow. Nice.
So we're good with the majority of this?
Looks good.
Um, so we've got a couple of marijuana questions.
Yeah.
Uh, and some uses for Summer Street.
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, that paragraph in Summer Street needs to be rewritten to reflect, yeah.
Under permitted uses?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, the, the zoning.
Above it. Yeah, the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna do that, uh, and I'm gonna try and do an edited draft that is going to be a redline draft compared, comparative to the existing Section 4. So it'll really be just a hot mess.
Okay.
Uh, but I think that's what we're going to need to take the town meeting. And then we'll slip the use table in and get jiggy with it.
This is last week's though?
Oh, yeah.
I was just looking at the dates. Do we have a meeting February 12th?
Correct.
That's, has the structural fibers?
And yes.
Okay.
Isn't there something else? An A and R?
There's an A and R.
There's an A and R, yes.
And then February 26th. All right.
I know you guys discussed the sign stuff. Are we gonna put that on at some point or are we gonna discuss that link at some point?
I can have a proposal for you for the 12th.
Oh, wow, okay.
Um, I, I.
You got my message. I sent the note. You got my message, I sent the note over about how I was thinking about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I printed that out for everybody.
Cool, all right.
Uh, you know, and I, if I recall correctly, the board was majority in favor of putting together some manner of proposal.
Yes.
For a standard.
That's what I got.
Yeah.
Minimum, yeah, okay. Cool, all right, thank you.
All right.
How'd we do?
We did fine.
Do we want, do we wanna get another one scheduled?
Another workshop?
Workshop, or?
Um, I think we're gonna add meeting schedule to the next agenda or meeting length, some sort of discussion on. How we move forward with timing of our meetings and length of our meetings, so I think that's, be a good point to do that. Hopefully, we'll have a full board do when we get a consensus of everyone's availability if we do decide to go forward with another workshop.
Okay.
So, all right. We'll accept the motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.